Welcome to the Wednesday, December 8th, 2021 Board of County Commission Regular Meeting. I am Nicole Gibbs, the Community Relations Specialist for the county. We are continuing to seek input on the redistricting maps. We ask that the community review the maps and post your comments on our form that will be open throughout this process. To access the maps and comment on the form, visit CedricCounty.org and then under Commissioners, you will find the information you're looking for on the B.O.C.C. Projects page. The Cedric County Treasurer and Tag Offices are holding their East versus West Food Drive Showdown through this Friday, December 10th. Bring non-perishable food donations to your favorite tag office location at either 5620 East Kellogg or 2525 West Douglas. You can find a wish list of items on the county treasurer's page on CedricCounty.org. As a reminder, all Cedric County Health Department vaccine clinics are provided on a walk-in basis. For the testing clinic, you'll need to text SCCOVIDTEST to 316-215-8313 to get in line. Both are offered to the community at no cost, and you can find this information at CedricCounty.org. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there's a memorandum of understanding with the City of Wichita for funding and maintenance of Calfskin Creek watershed improvements, an update on COVID-19 fiscal response, a report of the bid and board, I'm sorry, a report of the bid of boards, bids and contracts, and two executive sessions. With that, Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Good morning. And, you know, there is a reminder that we will have two executive sessions at the end of this, at the end of this meeting. So for all of you watching, there will be some breaks at the very end. So good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 6th Board of Cedric County Commissioners Meeting. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
In vocation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregime, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A brief comment. Sometimes when you say the pledge allegiance to a flag, it means more than than others, but this week seemed to be special with the anniversary of Pearl Harbor and the loss of Senator Bob Dole. So a lot going on that just makes you think, I actually went to the, to the showing of the Apollo 11 mission last night at Exploration Place. So there was a lot of United States of America this week in, in our world, so, and obviously our appreciation to Senator Dole and everything he's done. Others can make comments whenever as we call this meeting to order. You can make a comment right now. Anybody? Okay. We, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We'll call Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received a note that there was no public agendas email sent to us on the, working up to the committee meeting today, or to the commission meeting. Is there, when there's nobody signed up to speak to us, correct? Okay, so there will be no, there is not any public agenda. So we'll move on to the next item, please.
New business. Item A, memorandum of understanding with City of Wichita for funding and maintenance of Calfskin Creek watershed improvements.
Morning, Jim.
Morning, Commissioners. Chief Leiber, Director of Public Works. This is going to look a little bit familiar to you, but we'll run through it. We're here this morning to talk to you about the BRIC grant. And you might recall back on September the 15th, we were up here talking to you about a letter of interest for the BRIC grant. The process required that we ask for permission to apply for the grant. You approved the letter of intent. The Kansas Department of Emergency Management approved us to go ahead with the grant application. And we're at a point where the sitting county staff felt like we probably need an operating framework to support the joint application. Just a quick review, this is a map of the area that we're talking about. So these yellow cloud areas, Site 1 and Site 2, are approximate locations where the improvements would be made. This pattern of red is the Calfskin Creek running through west Wichita. The Dry Creek comes in from the northwest, swings around, heads back north around the north Y, MCA, and comes back into the Calfskin. The North Fork of the Calfskin stays just to the south of that, up in this area, and comes back down through west Wichita, hitting Maple at 119th Street and on into the Dell. And then this is a tributary to the Calfskin Creek that comes from the south. And so at the Halloween floods, we had this large area that's inside the city limits. Well, that flood affected a lot more than this, but that was really impacted by the fact that there's a possibility, that when we have those high rains, like Halloween of 98, they actually have high flows jumping out of the Dry Creek, across a little ridge, and into the North Fork of Calfskin and going where no one expected it to go. So the point of the projects would be to detain, using some dry detention storage, detain extra flow farther up in the basin and try to mitigate this problem. So, quick rundown. So the project would build these two dry detention pan, I'm sorry, dams. Sites 1 and 2 are shown on there. It's expected to remove 149 buildings from the floodplain, would eliminate street flooding at seven locations that cut off access to another 212 homes, so that's, ties into something they're interested in, is trying to fix transportation lifelines. How would public emergency services get back into these areas if they're cut off? And would remove another 458 acres of raw land from the floodplain, which could be possible future development. Project is expected to cost $40 million. The BRIC funding would be $30 million. They do require 25% non-federal match, that's $10 million. So the proposal is for the city and the county to split that equally. We'd be into it for $5 million. We have not identified all the funding for this at this point, but we'll be working that throughout development of the 23 through 27 CIP, which starts, you know, well, we're working on it now. It'll be going actively in January. So Y and MOU just creates a partnership framework, doesn't bind the parties. Will demonstrate to FEMA that there is a commitment to partner on the project, and it will assist the partners, the sitting county staff, in knowing where everybody's headed right up front. The key points of this MOU are, again, that it's not binding on the parties. It's an agreement that the facilities that we build would be incorporated into the existing flood control system for operation, maintenance, and funding in the future. And as you recall, you approved the flood control agreement for '22 last week. It's a 50/50 partnership, has been for over 50 years. The city will manage the grant itself, the design and construction of the project. They'll be the fiscal agents for the project. The county would provide information and guidance as needed. The parties are going to cooperate to balance the needs for flood improvements with impacts on county transportation infrastructure. You probably noticed from the map, all of this improvement is out in the county. So we do, you know, we need to work together to make sure that we don't create new problems. Sitting county would split the local match at $5 million apiece, and again, it's a, a final binding agreement would be developed after we get notice of the grant coming our So go back through the grant timeline again. This application is due by the end of this month to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. The city's consultant is actively working on it. It will be submitted on time. The Department of Emergency Management will submit that package to FEMA by the end of January. We expect to get, if we were to be awarded, we'd expect to hear from them in the summer of '22. We would then develop that binding agreement. We don't know what the contracting period is from when they, you know, say you've got the grant to when we actually have it all signed up, but there's some period of time will occur there. But we need to have it all completed, the project complete within 36 months after the actual signed federal award. So that looks like we're looking at '25 or '26 for completion. Yesterday, the City of Wichita approved the MOU, and we're requesting that you approve the MOU today. You have to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, there are any questions from the commission? And reminded that Commissioner Lopez is on the phone, so Commissioner Lopez, if you ever have something you want to say, you're just going to have to kind of ask to speak, say if I don't recall.
Sure. Good. Okay.
All right. Any other, any questions from the commission? And I don't see any, Jim. Thanks, I know we've seen this handful of times, and it looks like a major project. So with that, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I've spoken about this several times. My wife and I, after I retired from the Air Force, we built a home in west Wichita, moved into it late summer of 1998, and Halloween flood came along in 1998, so our home turned into an island. There was no exit to any direction. Central was closed, 135th was closed. The flood also affected a large portion of west Wichita. Over on Maze Road, there is a large nursing home complex. They were taking the nursing home residents out by boat because that entire area flooded. So this is a significant problem, and it alleviates a large area that can be developed and brought into the tax base in the future as residential development because it takes it out of the floodplain. I started working this issue, honestly, with Councilman Martz, and that was a long time ago, when I served on his district advisory board, trying to see if we could get something moving on it. And now, 20-some years later, we're seeing a possibility of a solution. And I want to thank the City of Wichita for keeping this on the radar, and for Councilman Frye for working this. So unless there's any questions, I think this is the right thing to do. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the MOU.
Second? Just motion in second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item B, update on COVID-19 fiscal response.
Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Pogruso, your CFO. So we have quite the list of information to cover with you today regarding COVID fiscal response. The very first item we are going to start with, though, is our lobbyist, our federal lobbyist, Jim Davenport with Thorn Run Partners, is on the, I believe, on Zoom to share with you information on the infrastructure bill. And let's see if we can...
I'm here.
There he is. Okay. So, Jim, do you want to share your screen to walk through the PowerPoint? Is that okay?
Yep, just give me a second to do that. I haven't done the share screen in a bit.
Okay, well, I'll let you pull that up. And Commissioners, Jim will walk us through information that he thinks is pertinent related to county business. We do have a number of county stakeholders here in the audience who are also available to, or county staff who are available to answer your questions related to some specific things you'll cover. So with that, Jim, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Are you all able to see my screen okay?
Yes. And Jim, this is Pete. Good to see you again. Thanks again for all the work you've been doing the last couple of years, and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Good to see you all. I'll try to go through this as, as expeditiously as I can. And if you have any questions about it, either after the meeting or, or, you know, another time, please feel free to reach out to me directly. What I wanted to stress today is really, you know, what this infrastructure bill really is and, and the opportunities that exist for the county over the next five years. So let's talk a little bit about, about the bill. The bill is basically broken into two main components. It was, it was the standard surface transportation reauthorization bill, which happens about every five years, but it was also an additional $550 billion in investment, transportation and infrastructure investments. It started as a very large proposal, and I don't know if you all recall, because you've heard a lot about trillions of dollars being spent in Washington, but the original intent was to have a $2.6 trillion bill, and what we ended up with was a little less than half. So this, this graph, graphic here shows sort of where the money ended up being allocated. The main takeaways that I want you all to remember, if you can remember one thing about what I'm going to say today, is that much of the money that's being allocated here is being spent, or will be allocated through formula, but also through competitive grants. Remember, it is a five-year bill, so spending will be from fiscal year '22 to '26. It is not the Obama-era stimulus bill, and if you all remember, the goal of that bill was to, you know, juice the economy and get the money spent quickly. This is more about making transfer, transformational investments in infrastructure, and thus it will be done over five years, which means there's not any, there's, there's no money on the street competitively at this moment. And there were no earmarks in this bill either. Kansas is going to get about $500 million in additional funding through formula per year from FY '22 to '26. And that's consistent with some other states where I've seen their numbers as well. A couple of the larger grants that have been available throughout the years, RACE, which was formerly known as BUILD, which is where we were successful in getting over $20 million for North Junction, that's going to be a larger grant program over the next five years, as is the INFRA bill, or I'm sorry, the INFRA grant program, which is also in existence. They're going to both get pumped with some additional funding for the next five years. The low or no emission bus grants, which is of interest to some municipalities, that's going to get an additional increase in funding. RACE, INFRA, and low or no emission bus grants are both current grant opportunities that have been in existence before this bill. Oh, I'm sorry. Amtrak, and I've spoken regularly and consistently with Commissioner Meitzner on this, so, you know, we're, we're both on the same page, I think, as far as moving forward with Amtrak. They are getting a lot more money, but they've got time to develop their priority corridors. The extension of the Heartland Flyer to Newton is part of their 2035 plan, which is terrific. So we know that they have an interest in expanding service into Wichita-Cedrick County area. The key for us will be to work with them as a partner, and mainly for the state of Kansas to work with them as a partner, to making this a reality. But in my discussions with them, and this was about two weeks ago, and I know I shared this with, with Tom and I believe Commissioner Meitzner, I shared it with you as well, with headquarters, they also encouraged us to stay on top of both the restoration and enhancement grants, as well as the federal-state partnership intercity rail grants. Local governments and state governments are eligible for those grants. So those are grants that we can look at to help assist Amtrak with whatever local cost share will be needed to fund the project. In addition to those two big grant programs, there's the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Improvement Grants, known as CRISI. Those grants are for improvements to, you know, rail stations and related infrastructure. So we want to pay attention to those additional competitive grants that are available while we also work or collaborate with Amtrak. As far as new grant opportunities for highways and bridges and so forth, I'll try to go through these somewhat quickly, but these next, I think, three or four slides are all brand-new grant opportunities in the transportation sector. There is a major bridge investment program to replace and rehab bridges, and it can be used for both bridges on the national highway system and off the national highway system. There is, I'm sorry, before I go too further into this, I have sent to, to Tom a more detailed summary of each of these grants as we know it to this point. So there are, there's about a page on each grant that I've sent to you. And as the, as DOT works to develop these programs, you know, they'll set up webinars, they'll put out press releases, possibly request for information from the public. We'll inform you of all that and keep you apprised of it. So there's about six to eight programs that I think will be of interest to the county. There's a charging and fueling infrastructure. I know you've heard a lot about EV charging. They're trying to pump a lot of money into that. There is congestion relief program being developed. Lots of money in these programs. Some have much more than others. All competitively awarded. Counties are eligible for all of these that I'm mentioning. The Protect program is all about resiliency, building surface transportation that, that can withstand, you know, extreme weather events and so forth. The National Infrastructure Project assistance, you'll note the large number there, $8 billion over five years. This one seems to be almost completely at the discretion of the Secretary, Secretary Buttigieg, and how he awards this. So I'm really keen on seeing how this program in particular plays out. The goal is to fund, like, I'll refer to it as mega projects, like $100 million projects, major projects, not, not those in the smaller categories. There's assistance for the local and regional project assistance, and they've tied it to seaports and airports. So I started thinking about whether you might have any access improvements that are needed at the airport that might be eligible under this. Safe Streets for All is about planning for comprehensive safety, essentially to reduce traffic fatalities. And before I skip, I'm going to talk a little bit about some water and wastewater funding. Do you all have any questions about any of those before I continue?
No. Jim, on the, the previous one, the, the $8 billion that's up to the secretary, would the, the only large project around here is our North Junction, which you're kind of aware of.
Right.
So is that North Junction too far down the road to be part of that consideration?
I, I don't think so. Well, this is over five years, so you would expect some of this money will be awarded in FY '22. So I, no, I don't think you are, Commissioner Meitzner, I, I think he would be eligible. It's just, you know, essentially, it's how does that project compete as compared to what else might be submitted?
Sure. Well, I just wondered, since we have had local, already local participation and, and KDOT participation in that project, so I didn't know if we'd get...
Right.
...extra credit there. Hey, Jim, hold on. Commissioner Dennis wants to ask a question, or comment.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, that's the question I was going to ask, was about the Northwest Bypass. We're putting $1 million a year into that for land acquisition. The state of Kansas is matching us on that. It's one of the projects that Secretary Lorenz is working with us on. The problem is the half a billion dollar price tag to be able to finish this thing. So if there's anything you can do to help us with that Northwest Bypass, we'd sincerely appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, that, Commissioner, sounds like the type of project that this grant program was designed for. You know, the devil's going to be in the details when the program is on, is on the street or in development. You know, it'll be up to the secretary and the department and how they want to, you know, implement this program and the criteria they set forth. And I, there are more details in our, in our document, the additional document I sent. But, you know, ultimately, you want to put forth the most competitive project you can, and I think having the support of the state, the secretary, your, your secretary of transportation, you know, is going to be key.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, continue on.
Sure thing. Water and wastewater, lots and lots of money as well. These are existing SRF categories and some new ones. SRF, the State Revolver Fund, for those of you that are unfamiliar. The money here is formula funding that goes to your state. I believe I have a breakdown of what's actually going to go to Kansas. I, I just got it, so it's not in this PowerPoint, but I can send that to you. You would apply to the state for a loan, a loan or a grant, or it's a combination of one or the other. I don't know if you have any SRF loans now, but it's just putting more money into that existing program. Now, these, these are the new water and wastewater grant opportunities, and I think I've got, excuse me, two slides on these. $2.5 billion over five years for this midsize and large drinking water system resiliency program. It's protect drinking water systems from weather events and cybersecurity issues. An additional $1.4 billion for the sewer overflow program. Again, these are all competitively awarded. Counties are eligible. Clean water infrastructure resiliency, which is somewhat similar to the program on the previous page, not a ton of money here, if you look at it over five years, but there is money primarily aimed at cybersecurity vulnerabilities, vulnerabilities, excuse me. This next one, connection to publicly owned treatment works, is mainly for connecting qualified individuals to, to, you know, connecting them to the system. You know, I think it's aimed at, at low-income communities and so forth, but I've got more details on that. This one I, I found intriguing, particularly because you sit on top of the Equus Beds Aquifer, and the City of Wichita is the local sponsor for the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project there with the Bureau of Reclamation. So you are getting some funding from Reclamation, but this pilot program for alternative water source projects is written in a way that is very similar to the way the Bureau of Reclamation runs its programs. So there's about $25 million a year over five years for alternative water source projects. And if you read the description of what an alternative water source project is, it's very similar to the description of how we have previously described the Equus Beds Project and the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project. That may be more for the city, I'm not sure, as opposed to the county, but I'm really interested to look more into this program as it develops. And before I go into energy, you have any questions on the water and wastewater portion I just covered?
I don't see any, Jim. Thank you.
Energy funding. The Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program was actually, it was originally established in the 2007 Energy Policy Act. It was funded under the Obama-era stimulus bill. So cities and counties got a formula allocation, you know, back in 2010. The program's been resurrected under this bill. Not a lot of money. It looks like a lot of money, but it's really not when you divide it across the country. Cedric County will be eligible to receive some distribution from this, and the eligible activities are almost countless. There's a lot of them. They're more detailed than a, another document I sent, just on, document I sent on energy programs. But basically, you know, you got to do anything related to LED lights in the, in the community or, you know, solar, or, or just energy efficiency improvements to public buildings would be eligible here. The Weatherization Assistance Program, this money goes to the states, but you should just generally be aware that there's going to be additional money here, and it's, it's generally aimed at folks that are, you know, have houses that just need to be weatherized, elderly, low-income individuals that need to basically, you know, caulk their windows, quite honestly. But there's more money in that. Now, these are some new energy grant opportunities. This first one would be available to your public school system. Basically, the local education agency would apply for assistance to, again, you know, improve the school with renewable energy improvements, and those, those types of improvements have countless descriptions. And then there's one here, excuse me, to prevent outages and enhance the resiliency of the grid. I don't recall if this is just, it's for grid operators. I have to go back and look. I don't recall if a county, per se, is eligible. And I know you all have interest in broadband funding, so this is more or less the last category of, that I'm going to talk about today. All of the broadband money, and there's a lot here, $42 billion over five years, is going to be allocated to the going to be allocated to the states, a minimum allocation of $100 million to each state, and then the remaining amount by formula. So, I mean, every state is going to get quite a bit of money. This program's going to be run by the FCC, though, and the states have to actually apply, even though it's formula, they have to submit some sort of plan to the FCC to explain how they want to use the money. But the states can award subgrants. I don't know how that's going to work in Kansas, and quite honestly, it's probably going to be different in each and every state. But you may see the state of Kansas putting out some type of application where you all can apply to them for broadband funding where it's needed in Sedgwick County. I found this map that you probably can't see very well. It shows broadband availability in Kansas from 2019. So maybe that helps or not. So before I go, just the last slide or two, are any questions specifically on those last couple of categories I covered?
Jim, I've got a question. This is Pete. I know that you've had some discussions, I don't know where it's at, with some of the state departments, Department of Transportation, maybe Commerce. Because some of this stuff on this bill is going to come through the states, are you in touch with them still, or did they, are they talking with you about helping?
Yeah, Commissioner, not at this point. I have not. I have talked to some of your folks in the past. I've had a conversation with your Secretary Lorenz at one time. I am certainly happy to talk with them and learn more, and I always try to look at the specific states where I have clients to see how these programs are being developed. So I will try to stay on that. I don't remember, excuse me if you all have a state lobbyist, but, you know, they should be paying attention to these things as well. But sometime, you know, I just don't have the depth of relationships at the state level that I do at the federal level, so I may fumble a little bit more, but I'm certainly, yeah, Commissioner, I will try to keep apprised as best I can.
All right, well, we can catch up off.
Yeah, I mean, any time, Commissioner Meister, you've done this before, anytime you can connect me with a, you know, specific person at the state level to talk about these, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions right now? Commissioner Al?
Commissioner Al? Yeah, so I think we're basically into the slides here, but I'm just curious, the other $650 billion, we're not discussing that today. Do we have information coming to us in the future regarding the other half of this program?
I'm sorry, I missed which program you referred to?
The IIJA program. You've talked about the infrastructure side, but we haven't talked about the other half spending, the $1.2 billion, sorry, $1.2 trillion. I think you've described the $550 billion side. What about the other $650 billion side? Is that going to be discussed at some point in the future?
So much of what I'm talking about here is the non-formula funding. If you go back to, let me just do this quickly. This first slide here, much of the additional money that's coming to Kansas is the formula side of things that are coming through the bill, and that's the funding that goes directly from US DOT to the state of Kansas DOT. Now, I mean, there are other components of the bill as well, but there's a lot of things that you're also not eligible for, such as the Corps of Engineers is getting $17 billion in funding, but Sedgwick County does not have a Corps of Engineers project. So I stayed away from anything that was not related to the county.
I guess my question, and thank you for the presentation, I should say that as well.
Sure.
The Jobs Act, a portion of this bill, we've not talked about the Jobs Act side of the bill. Is that coming to us at some point?
I'll have to, let's have a conversation after, so I just, I can hone in on exactly what you might be looking for, because what we tried to do here was to cover everything that was primarily in the wheelhouse of the county that you would be actually eligible for.
Okay, all right, well, that helps greatly. Thank you so much, Jim.
Okay, sure, yeah. If there, I mean, this bill was 2,000-plus pages. I've had the unfortunate experience to read a lot of it over the past month. I have it in front of me almost on a daily basis. There are other categories, I'm happy to touch upon them, but maybe that's best suited for another follow-up call. So the last couple of slides, just kind of to reiterate, you know, what's next and what this all means. The federal agencies right now, with particularly two of them that are getting a lot of money that we talked about today, have to hire staff just to manage this bill. Department of Energy, there was a Washington Post article, said the Department of Energy is going to need to hire 1,000 people just to manage this bill. The Department of Transportation is probably going to do the same thing, and there's been some articles that state DOTs may have to hire additional employees to do the same. US DOT just put out a landing page, and I put the website link up here. There's not really a lot of information on there yet, except the bill text and a few other items, but you can click on that, on that web link at some point if you want, and that's supposed to, I believe it's supposed to be a clearinghouse for anything related to this bill that is under their jurisdiction. We expect existing grant opportunities that I mentioned earlier, like RACE and INFRA, you know, those will be available probably in the next three months, but a lot of these new grant opportunities that I went through, you're going to, we're going to be waiting and watching. They have to develop them at the agency level, then they have to put out a notice of funding request or solicitation and so forth. So it's, you know, important to remember, it's a five-year bill, and that's one key takeaway I want you all to have. So looking forward to 2022, you know, Congress is still focused on the other half of President Biden's agenda, which is the Build Back Better Act. They need to wrap up 2021 issues. It looks like they've found a path forward on the debt ceiling, but current government funding is on hold right now. We've, they passed a continuing resolution until February, which means they have not made decisions on FY '22 spending to this point. And as a result, Congress will begin work on the FY '23 appropriations process in the wintertime. We'll have the opportunity to submit projects, again, to Senator Moran. He pursued congressional earmarks for some of his localities, so we can submit projects to him next year. And as far as the return to work, this has been the big mystery. The federal agencies are still operating under remote work policies, and they are going to continue to do so for quite some time. They are working on return-to-work plans, but those return-to-work plans have quite a bit of flexibility for employees. So in the past, I would take clients into meetings with a particular federal agency official, and I don't know what that's going to look like here in the near future. Same with Capitol Hill. Access to the Hill is extremely limited, and they haven't changed it, so I don't know what that means. I know one or two of the commissioners are coming for NACO. I don't know what that means as far as. So I am finished here. I appreciate all your time. Do you have any other questions for me?
Correct. Yeah, Jim, you broke up at the very end. You basically were saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you were saying that access to various departments and the Hill might be somewhat restrictive or limited, but.
Yeah, they are still limited, and there's really no, I can't prognosticate on when things are going to look normal again.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Cruz has a question or comment.
Hey, Jim, this is Lacey. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Hey, so did you say that, a couple of reports, like I'm reading a Washington Post report about the Build Back Better Act, they said they were going to vote by Christmas. Did you say they pushed that to February?
I'm sorry, they pushed the continuing, they pushed FY '22 appropriations to February. Build Back Better, every day it changes. They, Leader Schumer would like to have it voted on before Christmas, but I don't know if that's going to happen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just have something real quick? Jim, thank you so much for being on, and I am coming, Commissioner Lopez, I'm coming in February for the NACO conference you mentioned, and look forward to getting a chance to talk with you a little bit more then, and hopefully before then, we can talk a little bit more about Amtrak, too, because I'd like to get a little bit more caught up on everything before and what we're doing going forward, just to see if I can be of any assistance while I'm there.
It sounds good to me. Happy to do it.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Lopez?
Nope, not on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Jim, I don't see any, you know, I appreciate your relationship with the county for the last few years. It's been very beneficial, and I know our various departments and our commissioners are very appreciative. I see nods of approval from many that are here in the audience. So thanks for all your work, and I know you're always available, and it's greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work, and like I said, if you have any specific questions about the bill or Build Back Better, feel free to reach out to me directly.
Okay, and your Zoom background really looks like, is that the Capitol?
Looks nice, huh?
Yeah. Okay, thank you again, Jim. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, commissioners, we have another item to follow this one related to ARPA. If you would like to receive and file that prior item, you may, or we are going to, I'm going to ask you to take specific action on this next item for the ARPA spending plan. So if you're okay with that, we can just take a vote at the end of this particular portion of the discussion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we receive and file our federal report from Mr. Davenport. There's a motion in a second to receive and file. Don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay.
All right, thank you, commissioners. So just a quick roadmap of what we're going to do next. We will talk about the 2022 ARPA spending plan, as well as a bit of revision to the 2021 plan. I will ask you to take a vote to approve that. Once we are concluded with that discussion, Brent Shelton will come to the podium and give you an update on Community Navigators and its new fancy brand name that he'll talk through, and then finally, we will give you a quick, excuse me, a quick COVID spending update. Since we used to do those on a monthly basis, we will give you this one orally instead of in writing, which is what you've been getting the last few months. So with that, we will jump right into it. So you should have two documents related to this particular discussion at your desks, a PowerPoint that looks like this, and then a summary spending plan that looks like this. And so I'm going to focus primarily on the PowerPoint, but you can certainly refer to that spending plan document, and that will be posted online as soon as you approve it.
Okay, and.
Oh, apologies.
Can I just remind also that we will be, our executive session is in 45 minutes about, so.
Yes, we will move quickly.
I know, but are you all right with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll do my part if you'll do yours.
Okay.
Okay, with that, so a quick reminder of what we're even talking about today. So we know that ARPA had $1.9 trillion in it. Of that, $350 billion was allocated for states and local and tribal governments. We, of course, know that we are allocated $102 million from that. We have received the first half. We received that in June. We'll get the second half hopefully next May or June. The city of Wichita received funding. Other cities in Sedgwick County received about $13.6 million collectively, so just to local governments, not including schools, which receive their own funds, but just from this bucket, we have $186.3 million in this community, and of course, we know the state of Kansas received $1.6 billion. So we are all going through this at the same time. There were a number of authorized uses, just highlights, again, response to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative effects, premium pay for certain types of workers, replacement of revenue to continue to offer, cost of government services, and then investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, although we know that landscape has changed a bit based on what we just heard from Jim Davenport. So one of the things that we have heard from the interim rule consistently is that whatever we do do needs to be, have a direct correlation to COVID or its negative economic impact, and the response to it needs to be proportional to that impact. So just something to keep in mind as we talk through what has been recommended for your approval today. So the timeline, this thankfully has a little more time than CARES did. ARPA was approved and signed into law back in March. Interim guidance was issued in May. You can see that FAQs have already been issued multiple times since that interim rule came out. Comments from governments were due back to the feds back in August, and so since then, we have been waiting on the final rule, and we keep hearing maybe it's just around the corner, but it hasn't quite appeared yet. We have some bets on when we think that'll actually come out. We had external surveys that were done, internal surveys that were done. You know that we've had an ongoing needs assessment posted on our website for several months now. You all approved a 2021 urgent need spending plan back in July, and you have modified it a couple of times since. And we, in the next few weeks, will be posting something that's called the Letter of Interest on our website. It will be available in three languages, and what we are after is basically telling the community, here are the types of eligible uses, what types of needs do you have that might be eligible, and how much money do you need for that? That can be used as a little bit more of a deeper dive than what we're going through with our need surveys and our focus groups. This will be opportunities for actual entities to tell us what they need, so that then we can come back to you and formulate some recommendations. Yes, sir.
So this letter of interest, two things, it'll have a format, kind of how they fill it out?
Yes, so it'll be available on the website. We've already got a form that we're looking at today that'll ask for contact information and details on what their needs are.
So those, I think all of us have been, over time, have had inquiries, and we've, I think we've done a nice job of filtering those to your departments. So those inquiries will still, does that already means they're in the pipeline, or do they need to fill out a letter of interest also?
We will want them to fill out a letter of interest, because right now, we're asking for vague information through that needs assessment. Just tell us about your need. This time, we're actually telling them to tell us how much money is assigned to that need.
Okay, all right, that's good information for us all. Thank you.
Yes, so we will let you know as soon as that is ready. We anticipate it within the next week or two. Obviously, it takes a minute to get everything translated and then posted on the web, but we anticipate having that up for at least four weeks, and so we anticipate it going up in mid-December and anticipate it coming down in mid-January, and of course, we will work with all of the right folks to make sure that is advertised in the right spots.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you. So as far as documentation goes for those requesting funds, I get it that the interim guidance still hasn't been, the final rule still hasn't come down, but how will we communicate exactly the things that are needed, like, for example, employees' time, how it is documented? I don't want to have the same issue we had with CARES, with some of these entities receiving funds, expecting a certain amount, spending that money, waiting to get reimbursed, and that never comes. So how do we plan to not have that happen again?
That is a wonderful question, and you have segued beautifully into my next slide. And so the letter of interest is not an application. It is merely letting us know what they think the needs are, so that we can look at all of those together and then identify common themes and come to you and talk about what priorities you may have. There's still quite a bit of work to be done after that. So after we have the letter of interest, we, of course, have to go through the notice of funding opportunity, similar to what we did with CARES. That's where we'll have some more, some ideas, maybe, a little bit more of what type of programming people are saying they need and what type you might be interested in putting out, so we would ask you to approve that. And then once that goes out, we'll get more information, and that will be used to build the application. And that's where your question comes into play. What we will do before people are even allowed to apply for this next round of funding is have them sit through a video training that basically says, here's what will be eligible. Here are the type of documents that you'll have to be able to provide in order to. Here are the type of documents that you'll have to be able to provide in order to substantiate it so that people have a clear idea of what is expected from the get-go and what they will be expected to produce and on what basis. So we will have a, and that's why we want to wait for a final rule so that we're not changing rules mid-stream on anybody who's getting funding from us. So we will be very intentional on the front end before you apply. Once you submit an application, the agreement will be very clear on exactly what it is that you're agreeing to and how you get the funds. And then we'll go from there with training and monitoring and all of that. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Will there be sort of a, you know, a framework of how this is going to be laid out? So this is, this letter of interest, some could maybe misconstrue it as an application. So how, so I guess just to, to make it crystal clear, you know, this is step one of an eight-step process or I don't know what you'll come up with, but something like that, that's clear on each one of these pages that says, okay, hey, this isn't an application. That's, you're gonna have to do that too.
Absolutely. And, and we have, I have seen the draft. Anisa, our ARPA grand analyst, has worked with Martha, who is our WIT project manager, to put together the forms. And it is bolded and underlined in multiple places. This is not an application. And yes, I think we can make some modifications to advertise that here's going to be the rest of the process so they don't think they've done this and they're done and eligible for funding. Thanks. Sure.
Hold on one second. I've just got word that we may have a video. But we're okay? We're back on? So we can continue, you think? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
No problem. Okay. So the process going forward, that generally outlines what we're talking about. We're going to continue to do some community engagement. We're going to continue to assess what other funding opportunities are out there, similar to what we just talked about on the infrastructure bill. As Brent can share through those focus groups, we heard a lot from cities especially about their infrastructure needs. It seems as though if the goal is truly to use ARPA as a gap filler, which is something we had talked about back when this funding first came out, it may behoove them to maybe work more on the infrastructure bill side of things as opposed to using Cedric County ARPA funds to fill that in. But that is certainly a discussion we will have in the coming months. So with that, just, we'll jump into the spending plan if that's okay. So first, we're going to talk about 2021. If you recall that through the three various spending plan actions you've taken, you have allocated $42.98 million toward these categories listed on this slide for the 2021 spending plan. As a part of our update for 2022, we reached out to the departments that were included in this spending plan and said, how much do you really think you're going to spend in 2021? I think we've all seen that processes, procurement processes, take longer maybe than we expect or expected at the time. So we're not spending quite as much as we thought. So what we're going to do now is walk through the various programs. I'll show you what the original allocation is and what we're asking to revise the 2021 allocation to as a part of your vote today. So public health response, one of the items you'll talk about on bid board today is temporary employment agency services. We have been paying for those out of COVID general funds. We are hoping to ship those to ARPA now that it will come to you for approval. So we will expect to spend 5.5 million of that allocation this year. County COVID protections came in at about 123,000. Recovery Connect, which is Community Navigators, you all approved that bid board item several weeks ago. The contract is in process and that will come to you. And so until we have that contract, we won't make payment. So even though the program is underway, we don't actually expect payment until early next year. Court backlog, this was for the DA, Court Sheriff Corrections, Regional Forensics Science Center, and Facilities. And if you will recall, just over 7 million of this was for the work to redo this courthouse. Well, all of that is going through the competitive procurement process. We don't actually expect to spend that money this year. And you'll see probably not even in the first quarter of next year other than design. And so the actual amount spent this year is anticipated to be closer to $300,000. For premium pay, you all had approved 20 million toward that through a cleanup process. Looking at all of the positions that had not received premium pay, we have learned that there were positions that were not included that should have been. And so we are requesting to increase the allocation to 21 million instead of the 20 million. You may recall that that second half payment of premium pay is coming out this Friday. If you approve this today, those additional employees would get their checks on the final payroll of the year in two weeks. For ARPA management, these are positions and consultants that are assisting us with trying to do the day-to-day work within finance and also in HR. We expect that to come in at closer to 580,000. We had 2 million in the contingency. You all did approve an urgent spending process. So for example, the East, or I'm sorry, the Harry Street testing site was an urgent need that came through ARPA. We accessed the contingency for that and a few other incidental needs, we would access it for the premium pay. And so that would reduce the contingency to just about 890,000. So grand total, what we would ask you to approve is the 2021 revised plan is 28,437,223. So you can see how that breaks out on this slide here. And then jumping into 2022, at the same time, we ask those departments to tell us what they really think they'll spend in 2021. We also ask them to tell us for those same things, what do you think you will need in 2022? And do you have other COVID-related needs? To be fair though, the way the leadership team settled out and making this recommendation to you is that we continue with the urgent needs that we already had and not necessarily do additional asks at this time so that everyone in the organization and also the community can compete for those additional funds. So what you'll see here are the exact same categories we talked about on the other slides. For one quarter of 2022, this is what we expect to actually spend. The plan then would be to come back to you in February with a more comprehensive plan for the rest of the funding. So public health response at 4.2 million, county COVID protections at 82,000. Recovery Connect, excuse me, one quarter of that is $125,000. We would not propose to do any additional premium pay. I have broken court backlog into three parts because we do have one tweak. So you can see the DA Courts Corrections and Regional Forensics Science Center are just at 1.6 million. The sheriff's portion related to backlog is about 380,000. But we also know that the sheriff has had significant staffing issues. And so one of the proposals that he is looking to do is to install cameras and locks in his jail to try and do some, I guess, remote monitoring in those pods. And so this would be $225,000 to do some design work to see what that would cost. And of course, they will work with facilities to make that process happen. And then court backlog, part three for facilities. We do, based on the presentation you saw yesterday associated with the administrative building, there is not a move planned in the first three months of the year. But we do anticipate that there would be some work needed at whatever lease site we go to to make sure the county can be on our network. And so that cost is included here as a part of that leased space. That is the only cost. There are no movers or lease costs at this time. Courthouse space remodel, design, and plan review would be about 430,000. Again, part of the package you heard yesterday. And then we would hire that senior construction, construction project manager, again, to Commissioner Cruz's question yesterday, at 20,000. For ARPA management, we know that there is going to be significant time from our consultants in helping us stand up programs, stand up grant portals, and of course, our own staff. So we have estimated 511,000 for the first quarter. We have increased the contingency to 3 million. Again, as we continue to see how testing evolves in the community, we want to make sure that the county is in a position to respond if necessary. And so that contingency has been bulked up a bit just in case that first quarter requires us to do something different than what we have been doing. And so that brings the total ask to 10.7 million. So if you were to add your 2021 revised spending plan to this 2022 first quarter spending plan, you'll see that we are actually less than what you had originally approved as a part of your 2021 spending plan. And that is shown, if you have your handout, and again, this will be posted on the website, but that total is shown here at the bottom. So just, there are a few other slides that I included here that will just hit on just some reminders about how often we report on these and what types of things we're required to report. We have performance metrics that we are required to produce on an annual basis. Also, as a part of our quarterly reporting, there are certain expenditure categories, there are 66 categories that we must report in to the feds. And so we are being very careful to design our financial setup so that we can comply with this. We of, are, of course, tied to the uniform administrative requirements and terms and conditions that come with that, which in large part is the procurement we've talked about. So we actually are working with Wood O'Briens to do some additional training on those types of considerations, depending on the programs, projects, and administrative things we do that will make available to commissioners and senior staff. So there's a lot of work happening behind the scenes other than just the spending plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend that you approve this 2021 revised spending plan and 2022 first quarter plan.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Lindsay, for this update. I just have a real quick question. I know that there, there's been some concerns around the money not being spent and the urgency of some in our community, especially small nonprofits and small business, how the money will be allocated. And so I hope that, you know, the State Spark Committee is working and we're working. And so how do we, I know that we don't want to duplicate funds, right, obviously? But who pulls the trigger first? And so I guess that, that is my main question, you know, when is the Spark Committee meeting next? How are we keeping abreast of what they're doing? And how can we quickly support our community because there are folks out there who need it? And so I appreciate you answering those questions. The Wichita Beacon, they ran that article. So I guess, do you have any thoughts on what's gonna happen at the state and how we're going to get these things out quickly?
Well, I think our goal is to be in a position to roll out county programs as early as April of next year. Of course, you have the Community Navigator program that will be up and running within a matter of weeks that will connect people to resources. So just because the county itself isn't necessarily operating a program to provide that relief, we are going to provide resources to the community to ensure that they can get access to what is available today. In terms of the state, I know their final listening session is this Friday, I believe, the 10th. And so that is a virtual session. And so I would imagine that as soon as that's completed, those Spark Committee staff will be compiling information for them to review. And we know the legislature convenes in January. So I'm hoping that early in that process, we'll at least get an idea of what their priorities are and where they're planning ahead so that we can start developing through that February-March timeline some, some programs that will fill the gaps as opposed to potentially duplicating. And again, just to reiterate, we know that with CARES, the rules changed a lot. And that wasn't necessarily the county's decision. In fact, it wasn't the county's decision. It was put on us by the Treasury. We want to avoid doing that this time. We don't want to change rules on people mid-stream. And so the way to do that is to wait for the final rule and to see what those, those parameters are that they give us so we don't have to do that to folks. So that would be, I think, my response to folks who are concerned about the timeline.
Well, and just like Jim earlier mentioned, his 2,000 pages of that bill, I can't imagine how many different rules you've had to read and understand. So I appreciate your diligence in making sure that we are following the guidelines as often as they change and hopefully they won't do that too many times. So appreciate the work that you've done on this. Thank you for this report.
My pleasure. We have an awesome team.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be real quickly. First of all, you did a great job presenting this and I think I'm generally supportive of everything that's in here. I don't have a strong opinion, but I do have a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
On the PPE issue, I'm surprised it's such a small number for 2021. Do we have, what's our status? I mean, I see on our, on our dashboard, we show green on everything. But I'm curious, are we connecting to the hospitals and finding out what their status is and that type of thing? Are we just looking at our own needs or is this greater than Cedric County only?
I, I will have to defer to Russi or Julie Simpson on the, what connection we're doing. But I will tell you, we did have a healthy stock of PPE going into this 2021 plan and so we did not need to purchase as much.
Good morning. Good morning. Julie Simpson, Cedric County Emergency Management Director. That is for the county agencies, the government agencies that we are supporting. We are, the hospitals are getting through their normal chains their own PPE.
Do we know their status?
I don't off the top of my head, but we can certainly get that for you.
Please reach out to them. I've heard through the grapevine that they're in what's called 1135 battlefields. It's called battlefield nursing, 1135 waiver, which means they're potentially reusing some, some PPE when that's not ideal. I don't know if that's true or not, but I've heard that rumor. And, but we're showing green status on everything on our, on our dashboard. But it makes me wonder because our numbers for 21 are quite small and we see a ramp up in 2022. First quarter is actually more than half of what we spent in all 2021. So it's, it's almost surprising to see the low number 21 and the higher number 22. Can someone explain that?
We're kind of projecting based on what current events are with, with the Omnicron and just, we're kind of beefing up to make sure that we have ample additional supplies. We have a very healthy stock. There hasn't been any issues communicated to us from the hospitals of having any shortages. But to get back with you on that, we'd have to find out where all of that came from.
Okay. Thank you for that answer, but please reach out to them and find out if they, if they need help or not.
Okay.
And then on the, on the re, Community Navigators, what exactly is our status on that? You said that we are, where are we in the process on this Community Navigator effort?
Well, Brent is actually going to come up to the podium shortly and give you a full presentation. Is it okay if we defer that question for that? Thank you.
That's great. And then on the, on the cameras for the pods, I didn't realize that was just for engineering only. So if there's a, if there's a proposal to spend money to make those enhancements, will that be ARPA funded or will that be funded through?
Oh, I'm sorry. It would be ARPA funded. And this is just what we anticipate spending in the first quarter. And so we did not think we would get through design in the first quarter to the point of having to spend that additional funding.
Thank you for the answers. Appreciate. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. To wrap our hands around this is because I know you need a motion to approve for the 2021. So for those that understand that we've received 100 million of ARPA over the next years. So originally, you thought 2021 was going to be 42 million?
Yes, sir.
And the reality is it's, with, with this approval, it's 28 million?
Yes, sir. So on this sheet, and we will make this available on the website so that citizens can see, we expect it to be at 28.4 million.
Okay. So that'll be the 21, assuming we approve this, this motion. So then the big picture is, but it's still budgeted, best guess for 22, county, county approved, county potentially approved expenses will be back close to this 42 million number?
Yes. When we put the 21 and 22 figures together, we're still less than that 2021 original estimate.
Right. So it's around, so for the public and for Commissioner Cruz's question, so 40 million is kind of dedicated towards county functions. So as we get into the, to the next, after the first quarter and get to this stuff, the buckets will be combined of 50 to 60 million?
Yes. And I, and I would take the opportunity to reiterate though, that a good portion of this is public health response. And so that means your vaccines and your testing. So that really is public-facing, even though it's being administered by the county and we do have the Community Navigator program. So I do think you, you still have quite a bit of external-facing programs to talk about.
Okay, that's what I was kind of trying to get, the big picture summary. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to the court backlog, part two for the sheriff. This 224,000 is just design work.
Yes, sir.
Is the 380,000 the total cost?
No, the 380,000 would be a continuation of what he's already doing associated with the backlog. So some additional deputies and a video system in interrogation rooms and things like that. So the actual projected cost for the cameras, let me find my sheet here, is roughly 2.8 million. But that is just for the equipment. That's not necessarily also for the design and installation and all of that. So we, we do have that additional cost for the design work that has to happen too.
And what's life expectancy on that?
That I do not know, but I will be happy to get that answer to you.
And what does that save us?
We will need to talk with the sheriff to understand if, if this is approved today, we will engage with the sheriff to understand exactly how many staffing he would not need and how we can apply that in the budget process.
Okay. As we're
As we're closing out fiscal year 2021, does he have any funds in his 2021 budget, general fund budget, that could help fund this?
I will ask him. He does have salary savings, but I don't know that it would be to this extent. For the full 2.8 million.
I just have some ill feelings approving something that we don't know what the total cost is, what the benefit's going to be, what is the cost of maintaining this equipment over years? That's going to add to our budget every year for maintenance of this. This one, I have a lot of questions on.
Well, and if the commission wanted to approve everything but that today, we can go back and get that additional information and come back.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had a complete description of what this project is, because we're talking millions now. We're talking long-term costs. We're talking maintenance every year. I don't know what the savings are. So, I guess I would feel much more comfortable if we would hold that and approve the rest of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If it's your will, do you want to make a motion to approve? I think, we don't have any other comments unless Commissioner Lopez has any comment. We're ready for a motion. I don't see one. So, the motion originally was going to be to approve the 10.744364 number? So, now, the motion will be that, less the camera item?
Which is 10,519,564. But for our purposes, if the commission just wants to approve the spending plan as proposed without modification, we can accept that.
Okay. So, the official motion will be for 2021?
Approved the 2021 revised and 2022 first-quarter ARPA spending plans. Apologies.
Madam Clerk, you've got that motion. And you've, and can you repeat the number, please? Again, 10 million?
That's the, that's.
That's the, that's my motion.
Thank you.
I'm glad nobody's watching this. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Motion carries. And then, I think, so you will get with Sheriff's Department and get that backup material that's requested?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And so, Brent is going to now present on Recovery Connect. And if it's okay with commissioners, I can do the spending update through email to preserve time for you.
Okay. That'd be good. Got it. Hello, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Meister. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. And pleased this morning to introduce to you and to the Community Recovery Connect, that is Sedgwick County's COVID Relief Community Navigator Program. As we have discussed over the past several months, this program is, at its core, the, is an effort to connect individuals, businesses, and nonprofits that have needs to individuals, businesses, and nonprofits, and have resources to address those needs that were a result of the health and economic impacts of COVID-19. This was made possible through a $500,000 award of your direct allocation of ARPA funds after competitive procurement. The Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State University was selected to receive this award and administer this program. Just a, the program itself is what's called a hub-and-spoke model, which means that PPMC will be the axis within which all of the, all the activity emanates, and it's going out to a number of community partners that are specialized in terms of the services that they deliver or the communities to whom they serve. The focus areas of Recovery Connect, you received this one-page informational flyer earlier today, and basically, we're going to be focused on three areas. Making people, making businesses and nonprofits aware of the resources that might be available, as well as then providing them with access, helping them access those resources. If an individual, for instance, needs access to daycare support or childcare support so that they can get to work, this is a place that they can go to find out where those resources might be available. And then, additional support going through the process. For instance, a nonprofit may be looking for funding support for a program. They can connect with Recovery Connect and can then be guided through that process, maybe some assistance with the application for the grant or the other funding support. We're pleased today that a couple of the team members that are with the Public Policy and Management Center that are heading up the program are here with us. Kelly Reed is in the audience, and she is the main contact. She's the program manager for Recovery Connect, as well as Abigail Hammack, who has been doing a lot of work in terms of the strategic communication. And I'm going to show you the website in just a minute that has been developed and is now live. So, word is beginning to get out to the community, and we have a way to make this program available. One thing that I would point out to you is that the program is available to anyone in Sedgwick County, but because certain demographics, certain populations were more adversely affected due to the results of the pandemic, there are what we call conscious connections or focus on some of those targeted ZIP codes or historically underserved populations. This shows you the list, the spokes or the program partners that are involved in this. And because it's available to everyone, a very diverse group of programs and partners have been identified and have been working with PPMC to begin to prepare for the rollout of the Recovery Connect program. Just to give you a quick update of where we are and where we are headed, project kickoff meetings have occurred between the county and PPMC, with PPMC and those partners that are the spokes that are going to be delivering those specialized resources. We do have a brand. Communication efforts have begun. We do have a work plan that's in process, working on communications. As I said, the website is available. And the next steps between the county and our partner, PPMC, in delivering this Community Navigator program to the community is to develop outputs and outcomes, because we want to make sure that we're being effective. So, we established that report card on the front end, and reporting is a critical part of this, because it's being funded with federal dollars. So, an output might be the numbers of folks that connect to the website, the number of folks that make a phone call, the number of folks that are connected to a specific resource. And then, we want to see the outcomes. Were those outcomes effective? Was providing transportation to this person the thing that bridged the gap and allowed them to re-enter the workforce? So, those are the next steps that we're working on. I can show you, if I can figure out the technology, the website that is up and running right now. It's very user-friendly. I will just point out, highlight a few things. One is that this is available in a number of different languages. We typically want to make sure that communications that we put around available in Spanish and Vietnamese. Those are just two of the many languages that people can use to go through and look at the program.
So, what is the URL? How does someone get to this site?
Okay. Let me find.
It's currently long. We'll get another domain name that's shorter.
Okay.
Right now, since it is through the university website system, it's a little bit long, but we plan to get a shorter domain name.
Yeah, it's Wichita EDU Services, PPMC. It's a long, a long.
Yeah, I'm trying to check it out, and I can't get to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold on, Brent. Commissioner Cruz.
No, I'm, after he's done, I have some comments.
As mentioned, individuals, small businesses, nonprofits can all access. I need help for my small business. I click on this, it begins to connect me to grants, microloans, other things that might be available. Kelly Reed is available by phone or by email for more specialized assistance. And then, at the bottom of any one of the pages, they, the person can link back to Sedgwick County, to our ARPA funding page. And, for instance, a spending plan that we just approved will be on this site, as well as other funding opportunities that might be available, and we continually update this. Some of that infrastructure information that was presented earlier. So, a wealth of resources. These are the first steps that have been taken. But I will tell you that from what we've seen so far, our partner has hit the ground running, and we're very excited about the direction of the program. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I'll be brief. For full disclosure and to avoid any conflicts of interest, how do we, as commissioners, like, I have been asked to sit on the Facts Not Fear Campaign Oversight Committee. I've also been asked to help empower Evergreen. And so, I haven't disclosed those on my substantial interest form, because I haven't been put on those boards yet, but I just wanted to mention that now. I do serve on other boards. It's been clear, Humankind, TCAM, all these other boards. So, at what point, if, say, we're in a board meeting and they discuss this program, do I need to excuse myself? How do I avoid any conflicts of interest to ensure that these nonprofits who are applying for these types of grants will not be excluded?
Commissioner, anytime that you have the actual or the appearance of a conflict that can result in a problem for that agency and their ability to procure an award through the process. So, I guess I would look at it on a case-by-case basis, but if, for instance, an agency, Humankind, was applying for funds for a program that we had stood up, recusal at that point, I think, would be, would be in everyone's best interest, so.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. The other question would be, just real briefly, at what point does a person need to be, like, what kind of program do they, do they have to have their program developed? Is that, what is the expectations of what your program will provide to our community? So, I've given the example of a young man who wanted to set up a transportation service for those in recovery. And so, at what point does he need to have his program developed as far as how many rides, how much it's going to cost? Like, what level of support are you going to provide to folks? How, what do they need to have before they come to you, so that, you know, things are flushed out in a way that you maximize your time for all of the inquiries that you're going to receive? Would you mind going to the podium, so we can hear you? Thanks.
All right. So, thanks for the question, Commissioner Cruz. We're still trying to determine all of the details about how those partners will interact with, and folks on the ground will receive services from those partners. So, what it sounds like is you may know someone who has a program that could be beneficial for individuals, businesses, or nonprofits in seeking support. And so, that will be kind of added to the collection of resources and available resources for people that we will then be trying to connect people to. So, potentially, that ride-share service could be useful in terms of supporting someone who needs, who needs rides to work, training, other types of programs.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm excited about this program. I've been sending a lot of people this way, so I'm glad that we have a URL that hopefully will be shorter, because when you go to Recovery Connect, it does send you to a recovery community for people trying to recover from drugs and alcohol. So, I hope that we'll be able to get that fixed soon. Thank you for being here. I appreciate that.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate a little bit of information about this program. I know we put a lot of money in it, but I don't know that we've given it a very good definition at this point on where we're going. That's what my concern is. I look at these different 11 partners, and how were they selected, those 11 partners, as opposed to other partners?
From my reading of the request for proposal, the response it came back, these partners were selected, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, based on the diverse nature of the services that they deliver. A lot of these are focused on some of those historically underserved populations, but this is, doesn't mean that this is the list of 11 that we're going to work with from now on. Workforce has been probably the biggest issue that we've heard across all industry and including the public sector, when we had focus groups and we've solicited information. But then, what keeps someone from re-entering the workforce, or what keeps this business from being able to find these, the qualified workers that they're looking for? So, there are other partners out there that can participate. It's just, this was the initial list that has been developed. Part of it is to provide communications and marketing to some of those populations, to provide kind of that diverse, that diverse group, if you will, that'll reach across the community.
Okay. Well, you talk about a diverse group. I know we let the contract to WSU, and now they have two different voices on this board. Isn't that kind of provide an imbalance to other organizations that may want to have something to say when three different main points are all coming out of WSU?
Not sure that, and as I said, this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is the start.
Well, let me go on. Which one of these 11 organizations is going to take care of broadband, if we have people that worry about that? Which one of these 11 organizations are going to take care of small businesses? Which one of these different 11 organizations is going to take a look at small cities and what their needs are? Which one of these 11 organizations are going to take care of venues, small venues and large venues that were impacted during COVID? Which one of these 11 organizations is going to take care of our service providers out here, who are taking care of people that are disabled, who have different needs throughout the community? I guess I just don't know where we're going and how we're going to get there, because I don't understand the organization.
Okay. To speak to a couple of the specifics, one is currently on the website, if someone, an individual needed broadband support, there's a link to getting broadband funding. Then, other resources are listed on there. They may not be delivered through one of these spokes, if you will, that have been identified, but there may be a funding opportunity that's identified in a list of the other available resources. So, if it's a disability-type resource, as those are being, we're being made aware of those, they can be added to the, to the website. Because it's not an exhaustive list at this point, but some of the, I think the idea with the spokes is that many of these are trusted partners in communities. So, if someone wants to reach out to that agency, they can get through, through the website or through other means to communicate these resources. So, I guess it's, like I say, it's, this is not necessarily an exhaustive list. There will be a number of resources listed on the website.
Well, who in Sedgwick County is providing the oversight to make sure that we're reaching out to everyone that we need to reach out to, and that we're not specializing in certain different organizations? So, I understand Oaklawn Improvement District in here, they're going to have needs, but there are a lot of other improvement districts. I don't want to overbalance this with saying this one organization has a voice and these other organizations don't have any voice at all. Who in Sedgwick County is providing that oversight to make sure that we can get the word out to everybody in Sedgwick County?
It's going through us and the Division of Finance as we stand this up, and. It's going through us and the Division of Finance as we stand this up, and we've been working with PPMC as well as Communications. And like I say, it's an evolving process and evolving document, so we'll continue to bring those things out.
Okay, well, we're putting a half a million dollars in trying to make sure that we get the word out, and I don't want to make sure that we're not just throwing mud at the wall and hoping something sticks. Thank you.
Commissioner Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, is there a plan to spend another $500,000 in 2023?
No, the only thing that's been approved so far is the initial $500,000 award through 2022.
So right now, there's been no discussion about what happens after that?
If this is effective, we would probably bring to you a subsequent, make it part of a subsequent spending plan, but we're going to determine the effectiveness at this point.
When this was brought up before, I was under the impression this was more about education and vaccination and, you know, basically combat COVID more directly. This is a little bit different than what I was expecting this to look like. Again, the idea of Community Navigator, in my opinion, doesn't lend itself to things like transportation programs, or job training programs, or reentry into the workforce programs, or giving businesses and nonprofits, you know, assistance type of thing necessarily. This is a little bit different structure than I was expecting. And with that in mind, do we have data that, I mean, I want to make sure that the solutions are chasing the problems, that we define the problems we're trying to solve? Do we have data to show what that is exactly, that we're trying to direct these solutions towards? For example, it was just stated a minute ago, someone says, "I have an idea for a transportation program, providing a service." And again, I'm not saying that that's not needed. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. But you ought to start that and say, "There's a need for transportation. How do we solve that problem by creating a transportation program?" The conversation should be reversed. And so I'm just curious, have we defined the problems we're addressing with these strategies? And my second question would be this. Part of this looks like operations versus strategies or one-time spending. So I'm concerned about setting up dependency on these programs that are basically temporarily funded, unless we plan on funding these long-term into the future with other funding streams. I guess I'm just curious about the long-term strategy of this, if we're going to do this.
First of all, to your question about the types of programs that we're looking at, vaccinations versus these other types of programs. The CARES Act was designed to be a response to the pandemic. ARPA is designed to be recovery from the effects of the pandemic. So that's the distinction between the types of things that are being delivered here. The second thing is in terms of data. We went through a number of different processes to gather data from the community. In addition to focus groups, there were surveys that were made available on the website. We had 1,507 responses, and they listed, and there were a lot of different ideas that people had about needs that were in the community. As we went through the focus groups, as I indicated earlier, across those six focus groups, workforce was the number-one concern across all of them. There were different reasons that people weren't reentering the workforce. There were a number of other things in terms of continuing to have vaccinations and where those were available. A number of needs were identified, and so that was the beginning of the nucleus, if you will, for the program. How do we connect people, nonprofits, businesses with those resources that might be out there as they've identified those needs? So the core of the program right now is based on that information that we gathered. Now, if things continue to change and continue to evolve, so that's why the program is dynamic. And your third question was about sustainability, I think, of the program. The initial allocation of the $500,000 was, we decided to stand it up for a 12-month period and see if this could have some effective results in terms of connecting folks that had needs and connecting those needs to those resources. If it's not effective, we don't come back. If it is effective, there's a potential that we could come back, we could shift it to another funding source at some point if we needed to. So I don't think that's a question we can answer today, but we want to determine whether this is effective. It's been demonstrated in other communities to work, so we're trying to do that here.
All right. I'll reserve the rest of my comments, because we're out of time. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
At this time, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, this is a navigation effort to help people get through the ARPA complex items. So is this a, do we have to approve this?
This would just be simply to receive and file the information, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm making motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on December 2, 2021.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm doing well, thank you, and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December 2. We recommend six items for your approval. The first one is the Stryker Power Load Service Plan for Emergency Medical Services, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Stryker Sales Corporation for a three-year total of $124,632. Item number two is Organizational Diversity and Inclusion Consultant for the Manager's Office, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Hicks, Carter Hicks LLC, and that's for items 1 through 11, and that's in the amount of $102,000. Item number three is the Temp Services, Medical Staff, Various Departments, as was mentioned earlier, which is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Cross Country Staffing Incorporated, doing business as Cross Country Healthcare Services, Interim Healthcare of Wichita Incorporated, and Premier Staffing Source Incorporated. And it's for the rates listed in the table, as well as the respective proposal responses, and that's for a contract period of one year with three one-year options to renew. Second item is also Temp Services. In this case, it's Disease Investigators, also funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Arnold and Associates, doing business as the Arnold Group Incorporated, or excuse me, the Arnold Group, Cross Country Staffing Incorporated, doing business as Cross Country Healthcare Services, and Interim Healthcare of Wichita Incorporated, also for the rates listed in the table and the respective proposals, again, for a period of one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number five is the InTrust Bank Arena, Telescopic Seating System, Division of Finance, and this is funded through the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Irwin Seating Company, based on the Omni Partners Contract, which is R191805, and that's in the amount of $139,017.40. And our final item is the OnCall Architectural and Engineering Services, Project Services. This recommendation is to accept all of the submitted proposals, and I'll just list them. Hanian Associates Architects, Schaefer Johnson Cox Fry Architecture, doing business as SJCF Architecture, LK Architecture Incorporated, Spangenberg Phillips Tice LLC, doing business as Spangenberg Phillips Tice Architecture, Dubois Consultants Incorporated, GLMV Architecture Incorporated, and Alloy Architecture. And this will be for the established contracted hourly rates. Also, additional information found in respect to proposals. This will be for a period that would end on October 1, 2022, but would have five one-year options to renew. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Okay, Joe, you guys were busy.
Yes, sir.
Cleaning up this last, end of the year, so thank you for all the hard work, but Commissioners have any questions about these items? We approve the Board of Bids as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet, Joe. Thanks again to your staff for all the work that it did.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Commissioner agenda.
Commissioners, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items D through S, as in Sam, this morning.
Commissioners, you received the consent items, and there's been, I'll make a motion. Is there any questions on them? And I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve Consent Items D, as in David, through S, as in Sam. There's a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. We do have exec, well, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Is there any update on legislative issues? Being none, from Mike Papoun. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Does anybody have anything to report on the committees? I don't see any. There might be, but I appreciate Commissioners' sense of timing right now. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Does anybody have anything under other to share? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Executive session.
Let's just be clear. I've had a little communication. I hand this to Commissioner Cruz. First item, maybe 15 minutes? Does that work?
That'll work with our schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for working.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 11 o'clock for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of acquiring property to build a county facility or facilities that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:00 a.m.
Second. Motion in a second for executive session. Don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And we will adjourn to the conference room, boardroom, and then we'll be back, so anybody can stay here.
Thank you.
No action taken, and so I will now hand the next executive session back to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until, what is that, 11:50, for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:50.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, and we will return here in 50 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome back. We give you a return from executive session and no action taken. So is there any other business that needs to come in front of the Commission today? So I don't see any. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in, and we will stand adjourned.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. PBS Kansas Public Television welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the Commission meetings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, PBS Kansas Public Television, 320 West 21st Street North, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.